Good evening Stillwater. I call to order the May 4th, 2015 city council meeting. And tonight, we are honored to have Ella Driscoll to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ella, will you come up to the podium? Hi Ella. Okay, so if everybody would stand, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the-- [S01, 2:02:20]
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and you just stay right there Ella. Thank you. So Ella, what school are you from?
Highland Park.
And what grade are you in?
Fifth grade.
Fifth grade Highland Park. So, next year, you go--
To middle school.
To middle school. Have you already taken the tour?
Yeah.
Are you excited? Yeah, I bet you are. Who's your teacher?
Ms. Hurst.
And, what's your favorite subject in school?
Science.
I like that. When you're not in school, what do you like to do?
I like to dance and play softball.
Very good. Okay, any, councilors, do you have anything? I do have a special fact about Ella. That's a really cool fact. She is Winfrey Houston's first great-granddaughter.
Oh.
Yeah, it's special.
So, very special. Is there anything else that you want to tell us?
No.
Who brought you here tonight?
My mom, my dad, and my sister.
And what's your sister's name?
Caroline.
Because she really wanted to come up and stand with you, didn't she? Yeah. Okay, thank you so much, family, for bringing Ella. And Ella, I'm gonna come down there with you and we will take some pictures. We have two proclamations tonight. The first is the National Bike Month and Bike to Work Week.
Whereas the bicycle is a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent form of recreation, and whereas creating bicycle-friendly communities has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, to boost community spirit, to improve safe traffic safety, and to reduce pollution and congestion, and whereas the education of bicyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users, and whereas bicycling activities and attractions have great potential to have a positive impact on Oklahoma's economy and tourism industry, and to stimulate economic development by making the state attractive to businesses and citizens who enjoy the out-of-doors and healthy lifestyles, and whereas the League of American Bicyclists and the Red Dirt Peddlers will be promoting bicycle safety and bicycling as a leisure activity as well as an environmentally friendly alternative to the automobile during the month of May. Now therefore, I, Gina J. Noble, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2015, in the City of Stillwater as National Bike Month and Bicycle Safety Month, and the week of May 11th through 15th, 2015, as Bike to Work Week. And we urge all who support bicycling to participate in the events planned, and urge all road users to share the road safely with bicyclists. And witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause this great seal, the City of Stillwater, to be affixed this fourth day of May, 2015. I don't know if I have to read that or not, do I, John?
Up to you.
And I won't anymore. I won't anymore. All right. Still getting used to this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We do have some activities for the month of May. And we do have a Bike to Work Day lunch at the shop, if you want to come by there. It's free lunch for anybody who brings a helmet. And we have the Ride of Silence on May 20th. And so, would I see everybody at those? Okay, thank you so much, just taking picture.
Whereas, community action agencies were created when the Economic Opportunity Act of 1964 was signed into law, and whereas, community action agencies have a 51-year history of promoting self-sufficiency for the limited income, and whereas, community action agencies have made an essential contribution to individuals and families in Oklahoma by providing them with innovative and cost-effective programs, and whereas, community action agencies are needed as major participants in the reform of the welfare system as we know it, and whereas, welfare reform in Oklahoma has benefited from the state's partnership with community action agencies, and whereas, the limited income continues to need opportunities to improve their lives and their living conditions, thus ensuring that all citizens are able to live in dignity, and whereas, Oklahoma and the entire United States must continue to support economic security by providing support and opportunities for all citizens in need of assistance. Now therefore, I, Gina J. Noble, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim, in Stillwater, Oklahoma, in recognition of the hard work and dedication of Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency, the month of May, 2015, as Community Action Month.
Sign it.
I just want to thank the community for all of their continued and overwhelming support of community action in all of our programs. Thank you.
What's to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. The consent docket was approved 4 to 0. Next, we have the public comment on agenda items not scheduled for public hearing.
A request.
And we have no request for that. That will take us to public hearing. And the first item is Item A, receive public comment regarding additional project selections for the Community Development Block Grant, 2015, CC-15-44. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice?
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Galloway.
Yes, I'd like to ask Ms. Paula Dennison to make a report on this, please. Ms. Dennison.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council and audience members. As you know, this is a little unusual request that we have before you this evening. At your last meeting, there were three projects that were selected by the Council for funding in the 2015 CDBG Community Development Block Grant Grant Cycle. And after the selection, the City of Stillwater was notified that our allocation had actually increased from just over $95,000 to an allocation of barely over $188,000. So, we're returning to you with the joyful, "We need more projects to spend this money" that we're getting. We do have a 2014 CDBG project. It is the Lee and Hall Drainage Channel Project that was approved for our last funding cycle. The construction bids that have come in for that project are quite a bit over the budget for the 2014. We have already spoken to Department of Commerce, and they are in favor of us bringing that Phase Two of that project to add on to the 2015 list of projects that were approved at the last city council meeting. So, if that is okay with y'all, that is our recommendation, that we add the rest of the 15 funds that have been allocated to Phase Two of the Lee and Hall Drainage Project. There will be a new resolution of leverage that's on your agenda for this evening, and we also ask that you authorize the mayor to sign the application documents. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counselors?
Sounds good. What a nice surprise.
Nice problem to have, huh?
Yes, it is.
Things came at just the right time.
Yes. Very good. Okay, so, we will open the public hearing, and there is one request to speak. Ms. Shannon Bellinghanson? Bellinghanson?
I'm a resident of Highland Park addition, around East Third.
First, would you please state your address, please?
309 South Doty, Stillwater, behind the old Highland Park Elementary. A problem we have in our neighborhood, we have several low-income people, lots of people walk to work. One of the problems is on East Third, around the 700 block of East Third, the sidewalk ends. And there is a drainage ditch on one side, there is a residential house on the other where people park on the grass. When it rains, it gets very muddy. There is a very, very narrow street, and it's kind of dangerous for people to have to walk. Now, I went to the Budget Fair last weekend, I spoke to Jason Peak, the Transportation Manager, about this. They are gonna come meet with me next Monday to look at these sidewalk areas. However, I was kind of discouraged from what he had told me that where, that what we're looking at at that one spot might be more expensive than what their budget could allow for this year for that project. So, I wanted to put that out there, that maybe some of the CDBG funds could be used for that, because this is a low-income area, and with all the people we have walking, it would increase safety and, I think, quality of life in our neighborhood.
Okay. Counselors, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, there are no other requests to speak, so I will close the public hearing. We have already staffed.
Paula, can you, I mean, I don't know if we can address that, but can we maybe put that on a radar of if there's available funds this year to look at, if it's something that should be done, or for the next, definitely put it on the radar for this next year?
Yes, absolutely. Excuse me. We continue to encourage anyone, when they identify projects such as this, that could potentially qualify for CDBG funds, to go ahead and let us know, no matter if we're right in the middle of, or beginning of, taking the input and evaluation of those projects or not, or in this case, brought to our attention sort of at the end of the project, project selection phase. We have, as y'all remember from last meeting, a number of sidewalk connection that the public had brought to us, and that's one of the things that staff has already committed to working with transportation for next year's funding cycle, to see if we can get a little bit ahead of the curve and have those areas identified, maybe even go ahead and do some of the income analysis that is required.
Thank you.
Yes.
Even though the cycle has passed to consider the citizens' request, I'd like to see a budget estimate for what that project might be while we're in the general budget process. I'd like to know how much that is.
We'll wait, Mr. Peak's gonna take a look at that, and we can report that back to you.
Great.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Uh-uh.
Okay, so the staff recommendation?
Is to approve the Phase Two of Lee and Hall Drainage Channel Project as another project in the 2015 application. You'll get to it, approve the resolution of leverage, that does identify the additional allocation that we have, and our one-to-one match obligation, and to authorize the mayor to sign the application documents.
That is a mouthful.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you Paula.
Any more discussion, councilors? Guys?
The resolution will come later, so-- [inaudible]
Okay, all right, so we don't have to do anything right now. We also have a number B, the Form Based Codes. Ms. Dennison?
Yes, thank you, and my apologies for this being on the general orders and not the public hearing, but I appreciate you moving it up. And I will explain the little bit of why rather quickly. As you know, the Form Based Code text was Phase One of this process, the regulating plan is Phase Two of the process, and the Phase Three will be financing options for the development and the building of the public realm in the area that we have identified south and east of campus, called the Corridor redevelopment area. The original proposed map, and this regulating plan acts as the zoning map to take the place of our zoning map just for this area, therefore, the requirement for the public hearing component of this evening. The original proposed transect map included transects Four, Five, and Six, which are varying densities, height requirements, setbacks, frontages, et cetera, within the area identified as the corridor redevelopment area. We had an opportunity to visit with a number of public in organized meetings and just coming to the office, and you can see the blue hatched areas, and then the green hatched areas are the properties that the property owners brought to us and requested changes, either from a T5 to the T6, which is the most urban, or the T4 to the T5. We took these changes to the Planning Commission at their last meeting, when they were considering this and making a recommendation to the council. And what came out of the Planning Commission meeting is actually a map that only recommends two transects. They did away with the T4, which is the least dense, the largest lots, et cetera, for this area, primarily because of the intent of the Form Based Code in this area for the urban-style development, as well as the owner concerns. Because after talking with all of the owners that had brought issues to staff, none of them wanted their properties to remain in the T4, or the least dense, least intense area. So, the Planning Commission is actually recommending only the two transects, the general urban and the more dense urban. You will note, again, as we discussed at the last meeting also, the black area that is hatched is the height limitation that is set at 75 feet. That is to continue to give a visual of Oklahoma State University when you're approaching from any of these directions, so not as to overcrowd anything happening on OSU campus. I will be happy to answer any questions about this second part of Form Based Code.
Counselors?
It's gonna be a busy area.
Yes, ma'am, it currently is now, and we hope it will continue to be busy.
In a much more appealing way.
We believe the Form Based Code will accomplish that.
Looks like a good improvement to me.
I like that we can do the mixed uses and that complement each other.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you for working on this.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else, Mr.?
Ready to open hearing.
Okay, so we have, I will open the public hearing, and we do not-- [inaudible]
No request to speak.
No request to speak, so I will close the public hearing. Ms. Dennison, recommendation?
Yes, thank you. Findings, you have them in the report. This area is covered by the Corridor redevelopment area. The regulating plan is, as I said, the zoning map for the area, and the Planning Commission's recommendation is to approve unanimously the regulating plan with the two transect areas, the T5 and the T6.
Any more discussion? Mr. Dorman, I forgot to ask you, I think, did we have good notice on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anything else? Are we to vote on this tonight?
You can give staff direction to bring it back. It actually will bring an ordinance back, because it will, both the code itself, the substantive provisions, and the regulating plan will come back to you as separate ordinances, I believe, on the 18th. Is that right, Ms. Dennison? The 18th.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I would just like to say that Ms. Dennison mentioned the input of the public on the committee, and just to reemphasize, I can't recall all the names of the people on the committee, but citizen input is so valuable, and we really appreciate the time and effort and thoughts and opinions of people who do give their time to make this city the best it can be. And I hope you'll bring the names of all those people to the next meeting.
We certainly would like to thank them. They worked a long time. In fact, Vice Mayor Darlington, wasn't this a committee you were on before you were a councillor?
That's right. Gave me tiny taste of what was to come.
It's been a work in progress.
Mm-hmm. And it was long before I was there, too.
A lot of hard work. So, thank you to everybody who worked on that committee. Next is general orders. The first item is Item A, appointment of person to fill the vacant council seat number two. We have seven applicants tonight, and here's how the process is going to work tonight. We will have the applicants, after I finish speaking, we will have the applicants leave the room, they may already be in another room. Until they are called, we will ask the applicants to keep all electronic devices off while they are in the room, and we will, each applicant's name is placed in a hat. Mr. Dorman has done that. I said a cup, but he brought a hat, which is just as good. And Mr. Dorman will draw one name at a time, and we will have staff go to get the person, bring them in here. They will have three to five minutes to open, or have an opening statement, and after the opening, councilors will ask questions. When questions are done, each applicant will have one minute to close, if they wish to, they don't have to. When all applicants have been called, they will stay in here after they finish, they'll stay in here until we go through all applicants, and then councilors will discuss and could possibly nominate tonight. If we do nominate and decide to vote, then we will swear the person in tonight, and they will sit up here tonight, and we will get on with our business. So, I guess we're ready to draw the first name.
Do we have applicants drawing?
Do we have applicants in here?
They're all drawing.
I think there are, okay. Patty's just always one step ahead of us. She is. Thank you Patty.
I'll let you call them.
You can do like a Wheel of Fortune thing? Come on down? I was kidding.
William Joyce.
Hello.
You will have three to five minutes. If you would go ahead, state your name one more time, state your address, and then he will have three to five minutes. There's the clock up there. Mr. Dorman, you want to explain the beep?
It will beep at one minute. Okay. So, at four minutes, it'll beep.
But if it does beep, just please continue your thought.
Well, actually, it'll turn yellow on it. Sorry, it turns yellow at four minutes, and then it will beep at your conclusion of your time.
It's a little more formal than I was expecting, but I can handle it. Well, my name is William Joyce. I live at 2112 IBA Drive in Stillwater. Been there for about four years. I guess I'll just jump right in here.
Sure.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here, the opportunity to talk to you all about serving with you on the city council, to serve the citizens of Stillwater. I hope, I'm sure you've had a chance to look at my application, see some of the details of my background, so I'm not gonna jump all through that. I thought I'd just concentrate on a couple of things that I think I have, a couple of qualities I think I have, that might serve well on the council. So, first of those, I think, is my experience with decision-making. My career to this point has been pretty varied. I've practiced law, I've done operations work in nonprofits here in Itaworks, but the common thread through all of that has been the responsibility of making decisions. I've had to, for clients, decide what was the best course of action for them, for my employers, figure out, do we hire somebody, do we open a new office, do we close an office, that sort of thing. So, I've had a lot of experience building a system, a process, of being able to take a lot of factors under consideration, figure out what the best course of action would be. I'm sure you guys would agree that most decisions, there's not a right answer and a wrong answer. There's usually five or six options that are somewhere in the middle. And so, I kind of enjoy that, I actually like that process of figuring out what are the factors that need to be considered, what's the ultimate goal we're trying to get to, and then being able to make that decision is something that I think I've developed over the last few years that would serve well on the council. Second thing I'd say is that I value relationships. One of the reasons I quit practicing law in the sort of private law firm environment was that I think a lot of times, the result was valued over the relationship. A lot of times, just had to accomplish something, and it didn't really matter, you know, what people thought, or what the, whether the relationship was damaged in some way. I don't think that has to be the case. I really don't. I really feel like in most situations, a good decision can be reached in a way that also values personal relationships. I think as a council, that's probably something you all have to deal with on a regular basis, figure out, how do we get to a place where we can make a decision and move forward for the city, while also keeping the people who are involved happy and feel like there's still a relationship there. So, I think that, in my career, certainly in my work as a mediator and working with a nonprofit that does dispute resolution work, have gained a lot of skill in that area, being able to talk through the factors that need to go into it, and figure out what people's behind, what's people, behind someone's position, what their real value is in a conflict. So, I think I'd bring that to the council, it'd be valuable. The last thing I think I'd bring is just a commitment to this community. I grew up here, went away for law school, and made the decision to come back. And my wife and I were really committed to coming back and raising our family here. Our youngest is three, so we're gonna be here a while. Beyond that, though, a commitment to serve this community in whatever way I can. I've done that so far in a few ways on the Wonderatorium Board. It's been a very important part of our life with four small kids. We spent a lot of time over there, and it was something I felt I could get involved with and help out. We hired a new director within the last year, and dealt with some pretty big sort of transitions and decisions there, and I think it's been a valuable experience for me, and I feel like I've been able to help in that role. But beyond that, really, my whole career, my whole life, I was instilled with a commitment to serve, and I feel like that's a-- And I feel like that's a responsibility of all of us. Everybody here in the community that wants it to be better, that wants things, you know, to change or to improve, you know, we have to be the ones that make that happen. And so, that's been something that I've felt very strongly about. And I feel like a seat on the council at this point would be a place that I'd be able to do that and that I'd be able to bring a positive influence in that role. That's all I've got. Wow. Didn't even practice that.
You didn't get beeped. Okay, Vice Mayor, I'll start with you.
Well, I love four kids. That's great.
Love them, too.
Yeah. I don't know if this actually happens, Will, but if you were to be on the council and at the end of your term, we gave you a plaque. What would you like that plaque to say?
That's an excellent question. I think I just wanted to say that I served well, that I listened to the citizens and that people were able to get in touch with me and feel like I was a real representative for them on the council. And that, you know, my primary commitment was to the people and to the town of Stillwater. I think that's probably what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
My question is, if you're appointed or not appointed, do you plan to seek election or reelection next year when two seats become available?
I don't know that I can answer that definitively right now. I think it's definitely something I've talked about and considered. I think a seat on the City Council is something that I could do well, and it would be something that my experience would be well-suited for. And so, I think so. I think I would definitely want to do that. I think the major factors for me are really going to be the time. I do have a family and a job, and certainly if appointed, and the time commitment is way more than I expected to be. And I expect it to be a heavy commitment, and I'm prepared for that. But if it's just not something that works well for my family, I may not be able to seek reelection. But I'd like to sit on the council. I think it would be a good role for me, and I will pursue that in the future, whether I'm appointed or not.
Thank you.
Can I follow up on his question?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, let's just tighten that down just a little bit. Let's say it's about a five to 10-hour commitment per week consistently.
Sure.
And maybe there's some summertime off. Would that increase the likelihood that you'd want to consider being reelected if you were appointed to the seat?
Yeah, five to 10 hours a week, I think, is not a problem for me. If that was...if the commitment was that at that level, I would certainly seek to be reelected.
Plus, serving on other boards and committees and...
Other boards and committees within the...
For City Council.
Sure, yeah. I mean, I guess, I assumed that you meant the total commitment, five to 10 hours a week. But even more...I mean, I think the question or the application asked, you know, was it 10 to 20 hours is something that you can commit. And I'm okay with that. I think that's fine. I think, you know, from what I've seen and what I've observed at the council, there's a lot of work that goes into it. And there's a lot of work to be done outside, conversations, talking to people, applying to emails. You guys are all very responsive to email, whether that's sent in the evening or during the day. And so, I anticipate that kind of time commitment.
One final question? Well, maybe. What do you think the greatest strength of Stillwater is?
I think the greatest strength of Stillwater is the sense of community among the people here. It is, in my experience, and I haven't lived a lot of places, but I lived in a few different places in St. Louis within that community, and none of them felt like Stillwater in the sense of people who really seem to value each other. Right? People who...one of the things that I love about Stillwater, there's so much... there's so many sort of organizations and services and places that people can volunteer and get involved with and do things to help the community. And they're all very well-staffed. I mean, there are folks that serve on those boards. And my time in the Wonderatorium, I've gotten to meet lots of other people who serve in different capacities around town. And there seems to be a real strong feeling of responsibility to do that. A lot of people who take...who step up to serve in that way. And I think that's unique in Stillwater. I really think it is. And I think that is a strength. I think the idea that people like it here, they want, you know, they want to continue the feeling of this place and that community aspect of it, and they do take responsibility to do it, I think, is very important.
Okay, so, the other side of that. Stillwater's maybe, what one issue maybe is a weakness.
It's a weakness. So, one of the things I've really liked that the city's done recently is the adoption of this new tagline, "Still pioneering." Right? I think it's great. I think it's forward-looking. You know, we're going to be on the leading edge of what's going on. We're looking for new things. I think it's great because it maybe does address something that's been a weakness in Stillwater over the years, is that it doesn't feel like we're always that way. And I think a tagline is a good way to help push a little bit against what I think sometimes can be considered not so progressive, you know, thinking, not pushing forward hard enough sometimes. I think this town has very unique attributes with the university, with Meridian, with just a great community, like I described before, to do interesting things, cool things that other towns aren't doing. And sometimes it feels like we haven't taken as much advantage of that as we could. So, I think, like I said, I love that "still pioneering" line, and I think that it does address what may be considered a weakness in Stillwater's past, is that we haven't pushed hard enough sometimes.
Any other questions?
Great.
John.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And you can sit right here. We appreciate that you took the time to apply and do your commitment to do this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Did you do your wind-up? Just tell them you can have one minute.
Did you want to have one minute to...for closing remark? Thank you, John.
I don't have much else to say except I appreciate the opportunity, and I appreciate your service to the city as well.
Thank you. Number two. Jeffrey Sykes.
Hello.
Hi, Mr. Sykes. Would you please state your full name and your address?
My name's Jeffrey Sykes. My address is 1112 South Gray Street.
And you will have three to five minutes for an opening statement, and then the councillors will ask you questions. The clock is right up there. It will beep...no, it will go yellow at four minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
And it will beep 30 seconds. Oh, just at the conclusion. If it beeps and you're in the middle of a sentence, please go ahead and finish.
Thank you. Well, my name's Jeffrey Sykes. I'm born and raised Stillwater. My father is a small business owner. He owns quality plants. He's owned it for 33 years. I went to OSU and graduated with an accounting degree. Since then, I have started my own companies, my own Beers and Sykes Enterprises. We are a property management company. We rent primarily to college students, so I'm in touch with the student population of Stillwater. We also own SMB Investment Groups, which owns rental property and commercial property around town. And I'm also an owner of Monopoly Brothers, who is a development company. And we're doing residential, small-family development for...or, I guess, it's just... north of Sunrise Street, over by Skyline Elementary School. I'm familiar with the corridor redevelopment plan and the zoning, municipal codes, residential, small-family, multifamily, things like that. I think I would do good on the council, and it helps Stillwater grow to become a better place. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Vice Mayor Darlington?
Nice to see you here, Mr. Sykes.
Nice to see you.
Your dad's kind of a legend. I'm wondering...I've not finished a term on the City Council, so I don't know if we actually do this. But if you were to get a plaque at the end of your time on City Council, what would you like that plaque to say about you?
I'd like it to say something about my community involvement with the community, how... something of that sort.
Thank you.
If you are elected or appointed tonight or not appointed, would you consider running next year when we have two open seats? As far as would you campaign and actually run for the seat?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Straight-up answer.
That's...yeah, yeah. It's fine with me.
Okay, so, you plan...you said it. Okay, so...what do you think Stillwater's greatest strength is?
I think it's their involvement with OSU and the college itself. I know that the corridor redevelopment plan is trying to connect downtown with OSU and its citizens.
And the other end of that is, if Stillwater has one issue that may be a weakness, what would you consider that to be?
Let's say some of the things that Stillwater has to offer with restaurants and, you know, businesses and things like that, that people go out of town to try to go, like Edmund and places like that, when they should stay in Stillwater.
Okay.
Do you have a concern that, since you own a lot of rental properties or you own a management company, that you might have a conflict with some of the zoning and, I guess, just day-to-day of things we do that may...
I wouldn't have any conflict with the zoning. I'd give everyone a fair chance, and I'd look at what the planning board and everything, what they would suggest, and try to make the best decision for Stillwater.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your application and your commitment to do this. We know that it takes a lot of courage to stand up to this, so thank you very much. Richard Wayne Buchanan. Good evening, Mr. Buchanan. If you would please state your full name and your address.
My name is Richard Buchanan. I live at 417 South Orchard, Stillwater, Oklahoma, 74074.
Okay, we have a clock up here. At four minutes, you have three to five minutes. At four minutes, we will...it will turn yellow at the end. It will beep. If you're in the middle of a sentence, please continue your thoughts. And you can start your opening statement.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and esteemed councillors, I've been in Stillwater now for about 25 years. My kids grew up here. Stillwater's a strange town. It's a very diverse collection of constituencies. We have now the increasing population of retirees, alums that are coming back to their alma mater. And we have the budding organizations that are going to house, serve those retirees. We have the VOTAC campuses to add a different dimension. We have an expanding industrial community. We got ASCO recently. We have Armstrong, which has been around a long time. We have Frontier Electronics. We have STS, which is new on the scene. We got investors in and developers, student housing, both in traditional neighborhoods and multi-story complexes. We've got many, many neighborhood associations. We got the BID. We've got the owners of the remaining agricultural tracts that are still in town that are ripe for development. They're seen as a crop of houses or commercial development by some. We've got the oil companies of recent and all of their contractors. We got OSU, the 3,000-pound gorilla, and all of its components, its students, athletics, research, blue-collar and administrative employees, and an army of academics that occupy vast physical plants, don't they, Joe? And then we have a very vibrant Greek community that's growing, that enriches and promotes our city in nearly uncountable ways. Finally, we have the largest constituency. We have the great silent majority, the ones that you never hear much from, the everyday residents of Stillwater, of which I am one. These diverse groups may disagree from time to time on what's best for everyone, as each one of them seeks to advance their own agenda. They're frequently in competition with one another. Well, seeking my...seeking compromise would be my approach when dealing with that type of conflict. I confess it, folks. I don't pledge allegiance to any single group, but I'll stand up for each and every one of them when necessary. I'm unique in that I have one foot in almost every one of the camps that I named. I frequently straddle the fence line of contention. I'm a single-family resident, but I'm also the treasurer and board member of the Westwood Neighborhood Association. I welcome multi-resident student housing with attached parking when and where it is appropriate, and yet I endorse single-family residency. I'm very, very involved in the Greek community. I advise the Greek Neighborhood Association on tax and financial matters, and I also serve as the faculty advisor to a fraternity. But simultaneously, I sympathize with neighborhoods whose tranquility is sometimes disturbed by unruly students that have become neighbors. I've been a practicing certified public accountant for approximately 45 years. I'm a former corporate executive. I understand business, and I am frequently asked for advice by local businessmen. But I'm not affiliated with any of them, nor am I compensated by any of them. I was employed in the oil and gas industry by Kermit Gee Corporation for about 20 years. I understand it very well, but I'm not in the pocket of the oil and gas industry either. And I vigorously support envi- and I vigorously support environmentalism. I needn't carefully guard my words out of economic fear because my income is from outside of Stillwater, which allows me to freely and openly speak my mind, and I frequently do. Taking a stand has often made me unpopular, but my opinions always derive from logical reasoning and seek to achieve fairness and equity for all parties.
Thank you, mister.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. So we'll start the questioning now. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Buchanan. I especially liked a crop of houses on agricultural land.
Yes.
Yes. If, if...
I can't take credit for that. Vice Mayor Darling, my wife actually planted that seed in my mind.
The metaphor continues.
Yeah.
If you were to be on the city council and at the end of your term, we gave you a very small plaque, what would you like that plaque to say about you?
He did his best.
Thank you.
Well, you answered my question in your application, but I'll go ahead and ask it because I've been asking it to everyone else. You don't plan to seek reelection if you were appointed?
That would not be my current plans. That would be, my intentions would not be to seek reelection. However, in politics, intentions today are not always forthcoming in the future, so, but that, you know, look at the year. I remember exactly how much time is left. Look at that as a testing period. It gives you an opportunity to test me. It gives me an opportunity to test whether or not I'm effective in the role that I would fill. If I find out that this is just an incredibly great place for me to be, Miguel, then probably I would run, but that is not my current intention.
Thank you for the honest answer. Appreciate that.
What do you consider to be Stillwater's greatest strength?
I addressed the greatest strength in my opening remarks. Its greatest strength is its diversity. We are a machine of many parts. Most generally, those parts all work together in harmony. Sometimes someone comes along and they throw sand in the gears, and when they do, we have to straighten it out. But I believe that diversity and tradition are our greatest strengths.
Okay, the other side of that, if there's one issue that may be a weakness for Stillwater, what would you consider that to be?
Here it comes. I believe that having just gone through what we went through with CAFRI, I believe that the university, the city, the community, the business leaders, all must come together and we must find some alternative for our student citizens rather than getting themselves so intoxicated that they don't know what city they're in and often what state they're in, which is a state of total and complete drunkenness. I think that is a major challenge that we're going to have to confront. If not, Mayor, ultimately, we're going to get a reputation. We'll get, the last thing that we want to do is make the Today Show in the morning. So I think that's the challenge that lies before us.
Thank you. Counselors?
No, thank you.
Thank you for, Mr. Buchanan, just thank you for your commitment to filling out this application and for coming here tonight and sharing with us.
You're very welcome. Thank you very much for listening.
Ariel. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your name and your address.
I'm Ariel Ross. I live at 711 West 7th Ave.
Okay, you have five minutes, three to five minutes, and the clock is right up there.
Okay.
At four minutes, it will turn yellow. At five minutes, it will beep, but if you're in the middle of a sentence, please, please continue.
Okay.
Continue your sentence, and you can start your opening remarks.
Mayor Noble and councilors, I'd like to thank you for considering my application to fill the open seat on the council. I'm honored to be considered among the people, some of these people here, and some other people back there, who've clearly already given a lot to this community, and I would likewise be honored to serve with you. I don't have a long history with Stillwater. Hearing the conversation in the other room, clearly, some of the people who also applied for the position do have a very long history with Stillwater. I've only been here for about three years, but I feel like in those three years, I've gone from being a complete stranger, feeling like I didn't belong here, to feeling at home. And I understand and value what it is about Stillwater that makes people stay and that inspires them to invest time and energy in the present and in the future. And on the other hand, my newness to the city means I don't have an attachment to any particular way or idea of what Stillwater has to be, and I think that that perspective might be useful. When I think about Stillwater's future, there are three general areas on which my interest is focused, and I can promise you that I have goals in relation to these areas that I'll be working towards whether you appoint me to the city council or not. In short, I'm interested in economic development, environment, and communication. First, I'm sure we all agree that we'd like to see a future of thriving economic development for Stillwater. Just in the three years I've been here, I've seen so many wonderful new businesses open and new events bringing business to the city, and what has struck me is that the events that are the most exciting and the businesses that I patronize the most are the ones that seem the most unique to Stillwater. So I would love to see the kind of economic development that diversifies our community and that makes Stillwater even more special, not like anywhere else. People in this city enthusiastically support local business, and I'd like to work to find new ways to support those businesses through which our individuality shines. Second, I care very much about protecting and enhancing the health, the safety, and the beauty of Stillwater's physical environment. This means everything from keeping our streets, our parks, and other public spaces free of trash, which I find myself picking up all the time, to being as sure as we can that any industrial activity within the city does not negatively affect the quality of life for citizens. Also, in particular, a big part of living in an urban environment is getting around that environment. I know you all hear about the roads a lot, and I know how many people are working to keep the roads safe and planning to make them even safer, as someone who walks and bikes around Stillwater whenever possible, and knowing that on any given day, someone I love is certainly on a bike riding around this town. I'm over here. I'm so excited about the complete streets policy adoption that's on your agenda today, and I can say that it's vitally important to me that any future development keep in mind all the ways that people use our streets. Last, I'd like to work to foster new lines of communication among all the parts of the community, and especially between citizens and the city administration and government. There's a thought from a film I saw last night about cycling and social justice that struck with me. An African-American woman was talking about why there's not more diversity in cycling, and she said that she thought people in general are intimidated to become involved in something if they feel that they don't know the language. All specialized areas of society have specialized languages, and that certainly applies to government and politics. I've been trying to learn the language of political action in relation to local government for the past year and especially the past few months, and it has been intimidating. I think I've made some missteps out of not knowing how things worked and the right people to talk to or how to approach them. I know so many members of this community who care a lot about what happens in Stillwater, but they're uncertain about when, or where, or how to effectively communicate their ideas. And I've got some ideas about how to give more people the language and opportunities for civic engagement, which I know is important to all of you as well, and I would be excited to talk to you about them. So to sum up, no matter what your decision, I am committed to civic action in Stillwater for as long as I'm a citizen here. I've discovered that I find municipal government absolutely fascinating, so you'll see me around anyway. However, if you choose to appoint me to the city council, it would be an honor to work with you and to work for the citizens of Stillwater.
Thank you. We'll start our questioning now. Vice Mayor?
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Since I haven't completed a whole term, I don't know if this is a tradition, but if you were to finish a term as a counselor and we gave you a plaque at the end of that term, what would you like that plaque to say about you?
That's a hard question.
Oh, I wanted it to be easy.
But a plaque is so short, it has to be...
It's pretty small, yeah, yeah.
You can make the plaque bigger.
You could have two terms and have two plaques.
Okay. I think I would like it to say that I work to make my community better for my son.
Thank you.
And for all the other kids in Stillwater.
Thank you very much.
My question's a little easier.
No.
If you're appointed or not appointed, would you seek election next year when we have two seats open?
Yes, I think I would.
Thank you.
What do you think Stillwater's greatest strength is?
The people. Stillwater has amazing people. I learned that the hard way, and I just, you know, the people I know are a force of love and commitment and excitement, and that's harnessed in a lot of ways. I think it could be harnessed even more to make Stillwater more amazing.
Other side of that, if there's one issue that may be a weakness, what do you feel that weakness may be?
I think there's kind of a segmentation of the community. There's the university, and there's people who live outside the city and the people who live within the city, so it's hard to bring all of those people together.
Good answer.
What, and you may not have an answer, but what would be your plan or just a general idea you would think? I know, because you spoke briefly about the language, basically, so what would you do to open the form of government more?
I'm so glad you asked. So I'm a professor at the university, and one thing I have to do for my job is hold office hours, where I just tell my students, this is when I'm in my office, you can come in anytime, you don't have to make a meeting, just come talk to me about whatever. And I think it would be wonderful if the city council had something like office hours, where you'd say, once a week, one of the city councilors were sitting at Aspen Coffee, and people could just come and say, hey, here's what I'm thinking about, because then you're having coffee, and you don't need to know that you have to sign up to speak or that you can't ask questions later.
Yeah. I encourage you to stick around because Pat may surprise you at the end of the meeting with something...
She already has my idea.
Quite like what you're saying. That's a good idea. Thank you.
Anything else? You can make closing remarks, or I can just say thank you for your commitment to filling out this application and being willing to come here. We know that this is hard. We've all had to do this, so...
Interviewed for a lot of jobs in the past few years.
We appreciate you.
I appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
You're still smiling.
We're done.
Good evening.
Good evening. Please state your name and your address.
Sure. Elaine Zanotti, 920 South Murphy Street, number 12302, Stillwater, Oklahoma.
Okay, so we have a clock right up here. It will be set to five minutes. You have three to five minutes for your opening statement. Tell us whatever you like.
Okay.
At four minutes, it will turn yellow. At five minutes, it will beep. If you're in the middle of a sentence, please finish.
Okay.
You can start with your opening statement.
Well, first and foremost, thank you, and I do not envy you guys. You have a great slate of applicants that are coming before you and interested in the vacant seat, so good luck with this election. You know, it's funny, as I thought about what I was going to say tonight, one of the things I thought about was that there's nothing more important to me than my hometown of Stillwater. I can say I grew up here, I've worked here, I've gone to school, I've moved away, I've come back, started a business, and I think the thing that strikes me the most is I'm at a point in my life now where I've done these things, and I'm at a point where I'm a little ashamed that I don't know much more about city government than probably enough to be dangerous. And as I think about my next steps in life and the timing and the effort I want to devote to what I want to do in the next chapter of my life, I think being a part of Stillwater on a whole new level is really where I want to go. Growing up was a wonderful town to grow up in. It was an amazing place to go to school, to move away and experience different experiences and come back and start a business and put it in a place in downtown Stillwater, which I believe to be the heart of a city, and watch that thrive and sell that part of it and still work full-time. I'm kind of at a point in my life where I'm thinking, what's the next step? And the next step is really to kind of see what Stillwater can do. Growing up here, a lot of times it was my parents and their peers, and it was up to them, I thought, to move the city forward and do that. Well, I can't say that anymore. I have reached an age where it's my responsibility. And as I think about the conversations that I'm having with my peers and my colleagues and people, it's, what do we want for us? What do we want for our children? What do we want for our parents? What do we want for our city? And so it's time to step up and time to be a part of that. Huge learning curve. I don't have an agenda. There are things that I'm passionate about, but I think probably what I'm most passionate about is learning about Stillwater, learning how to communicate, being informed. I think it's one thing, sometimes we all get in a path where we are focused on one thing and we forget about the bigger picture of things, and you can't do that with a city. A city has many parts to it, it has many entities, and I think you've got to be able to look at the whole picture and hopefully have a council of people that will help you do that and provide that balance for you. So for me, it's really what is this next step and wanting to support what's in the near future. Stillwater's 126 years old. I'm ready to see what the next 126 years bring.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start the questions now, and we're going to start with Vice Mayor Darling.
Thanks, Elaine, for being here.
You bet.
We're probably going to start this soon because I've asked this question so many times.
Hey, you guys are laughing.
Yeah. When you, if you were to serve as a counselor and we were going to give you a plaque at the end of that term, what would you like that plaque to say about you?
Biggest learning curve.
Okay.
You know, I really, I say that with honesty. You know, you can live in a city, you can own a business in a city, and you can work in a city, but I don't, I'm really excited to learn what it takes to run a city. I pay attention to what is important to the city. I pay attention to elections, I vote, I think of myself as an informed person, but I hope the plaque at the end would say, learn the most.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask a question you've already answered on your application, but not everyone's seen this, so if you are not appointed, do you plan to seek election?
to it. It's not just about tonight. If it doesn't work out for me tonight, then I certainly hope to see everyone in the spring and show that I really am interested and really want to be a part of the city of Stillwater. So, yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Weaver? Okay. What do you consider Stillwater's greatest strength to be?
You know, this may sound like a cliche. I think its greatest strengths are the people. I don't think you could find a more welcoming city, and I think it's a combination of the university, it's a combination of career tech, it's a combination of the different things that come to Stillwater. I think it's the people that make Stillwater its strength, and it also can be a challenge. But I think it's the best part of Stillwater.
Okay. And on the other side of that, if there's one issue that might be a weakness for Stillwater, what do you think that issue or weakness might be?
Oh, gosh. You know, I'm going to say a little bit of the same thing with people. I think sometimes you can be very passionate about where you live and where you work. And once again, you can get really focused in on certain issues and not able to see the broader side of things. And so, sometimes that gets in our way, probably provides a little bit more challenge than we'd like. And so, I'm going to say the people also. And so, I think it's up to us as citizens, and then it's also up to the city council to kind of help provide the communication, so there's a little less of that standing each other's way and maybe helping move things forward.
Okay. Okay. So, you're welcome. Is there anything else you'd like to say? And if not, I would just like to say thank you for completing the application and having the courage to turn it in and to come here tonight. We know that this is a hard process, and we really appreciate your commitment.
Well, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Beckstrom. Good evening, Ms. Beckstrom. Please state your name and your address.
Okay. My name is Nancy Beckstrom. My address is 2218 West Fourth Avenue, Stillwater, 74074.
Thank you. We have a five-minute clock. You can see it up here. At four minutes, it will turn yellow. At five minutes, it will make a beep. If you're in the middle of something, please finish your thought, and you have three to five minutes, however long you need for your opening statement, and you can start now.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I am Nancy Beckstrom, and I would be honored to be appointed to this council and to serve in this position for my city and my community. First, I'd like to acknowledge the other applicants for the vacancy. There are some very qualified people who would do a very fine job for our city. But I'd like to take this time to speak from my heart and explain why this opportunity is special to me. I was born and raised in Stillwater. My family has been here for quite some time. In fact, the young lady you saw tonight doing the pledge of allegiance is my great niece. And I knew you knew that, but what you might not know is she represents the sixth generation of my family in Stillwater. We are very proud of her this evening. Those of you who knew my father or knew of my father understand how much he cared for Stillwater, and I assure you, it was passed down to me. It's a great place to raise a family, to get an education, and to live in a strong community. And I know, as you know, that Stillwater is a very special place. It's a place where citizen input is not just heard, but it's valued, it's welcomed, and that's appreciated. As a council member, I would work to make sure that the city continues to be a safe and vibrant place to live. My focus in the community recently has been the preservation of the Westwood neighborhood and making sure that it remains a good place for all residents to live. And by that, I mean families, individuals, and both long- and short-time residents in Stillwater. I do realize that our city has other needs and challenges, including infrastructure and continuing the work on creating sustainable framework to support our growth. Stillwater's population has grown 17% in the last 15 years, which is wonderful, because it says that Stillwater is the place that people want to be. But it also tells us that our water resources, our sewers, our roads, schools, and city services need to be prepared for the growth now and in the future. It's been very exciting to watch what's going on downtown with the downtown rejuvenation over the past years and bringing new businesses to Stillwater, new life to Stillwater, and new money to Stillwater. It's all been very exciting. The recent proposals that have been discussed are even more exciting, and believe me, they're being discussed in the community and with people, our citizens. So, in my father's words, it's time to take Stillwater to the next level, and I would appreciate being part of the decision-making process in that. So, I believe my time's getting close to being up, so I'll close with some final thoughts. I have relationships in this community. I have the time and the work ethic to be an effective city counselor. I believe my strengths are my communications and my ability to respectfully listen to what's being said. I will come to meetings fully prepared and with complete and total dedication to Stillwater. I will work to be my very best, because that's what this city and this community deserve. Thank you for your time and consideration. And now, I believe you have questions for me.
We indeed do, and we will start with Vice Mayor Darlington.
Thanks for being here.
You're welcome.
If you were to serve as counselor and we were going to give you a plaque at the end of your term, what would you like the plaque to say about you?
Raised in Stillwater, born in Stillwater, raised in Stillwater, died in Stillwater, and did her best for Stillwater.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's a bigger plaque than she envisioned.
Well, we're going to put it in tiny, tiny print.
Little teeny, tiny font.
You had to be here to understand that one.
If you are appointed tonight or not appointed, would you plan to seek reelection or election next year when we have two open seats on the council?
That is a good and very thoughtful question. Honestly, I don't know. I think I would. There's a lot that I would like to do, and the only way to do it, I think, is to be involved with the council. And I think there's a lot that I bring to the council that would be helpful, as far as diversity and being able to bring a different view of things, maybe perhaps. And I do my homework, so I think I'd be good at it. Whether I would want to do it, I don't know why I wouldn't. But you're not writing this down, are you?
It's on the plaque.
He told me to this, Kenny.
No, and I appreciate your honesty.
Yes, a great big maybe on that. I think so, but I certainly wouldn't make any promises.
Yeah.
You do realize this is on TV. And on YouTube.
Yeah.
Counselor Weaver? What do you think Stillwater's greatest strength is?
The greatest strength?
Greatest strength.
Well, you know, we left town for 29 years and chose to come back. So, I'm thinking in my head what it was that made us want to come back. And the easiest question is the people. The people have changed through the years, but the people are basically the same. They're embracing, they're accepting. They want to hear your views on things. There's always somebody up to take on a project. No matter what you want to do, you can find people to help you and do that. And I've worked in communities where that's not true, and I believe that that drew me back to Stillwater, so.
Okay. Other side of that, if Stillwater, if there's one issue that may be a weakness for Stillwater, what do you think that weakness may be, that issue?
I think it's difficult when a city is growing like we are. You have growing pains. And I think that the city is well-meaning, and they're open, and they've been transparent. And believe me, I love that, because I've lived in countries that that's not true. And I embrace that. But I think sometimes follow-through is hard. Follow-through is difficult. And there may be great ideas on the table and great ideas that are passed and are supposed to be enforced and great ideas that people embrace, but unless the citizens take on some of the responsibility to help with that, it's impossible for it to just happen. So, I think the weakness is follow-through, and I think the weakness falls to everyone. Not being involved, not showing up at the party, not showing up at the budget meetings, not showing up to give their input and complaining later. Hopefully, and transparent and with all the website, the things you have on the website, people can find out anything at any time. I mean, there basically are no secrets, and they can be as involved or not involved as they want to be. So, I think it's probably that lack of that, but I certainly see that improving, so.
You lived in Alaska, Colorado, Texas, Russia, Egypt, and Indonesia.
And Trinidad, Tobago.
And Trinidad, Tobago. I missed that summer, okay.
And Stillwater.
I'm curious, and I know you grew up in Stillwater. What was the one thing that made you want to come back and call Stillwater home?
And call Stillwater home?
Yeah.
Well, I think the people is one thing that was. And I think, you know, the day I finished my finals in college, when I finished my master's degree, took my last final, I got in my car and said, I am out of here. I'm leaving Stillwater. And I did. I left. And I needed to leave. I needed to go out and grow and become who I was and not just always be Winfrey Houston's daughter, but to become, if I got a ticket at the police department, I had to go and fight it myself. Can you imagine that? My dad didn't help me do that. He wasn't around. Nobody knew who he was, and I needed that to happen to me. I needed that for me to be able to grow and become who I was going to be. Needed to make my own mistakes and clean up my own messes. And I needed to travel. I just had that bug to get out there and see what other cultures had and what they had to offer, and I loved it. I didn't love every minute of it, but I basically absolutely loved it. But you come to a point, and perhaps it's my age, I'm turning 60 this week, that familiarity becomes as nice as anything in the world. And to come home to something that's familiar, and you come into town and you go, phew, I'm home. And to have a place to call home. I had a lot of friends that moved around overseas and never ended up going back home. They ended up living other places, and I always felt bad for them, because it was never a question in our mind where home was, it was just when we were going to return. So, did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Happy birthday this week.
Yes.
Happy birthday.
Is that it?
Thank you very much. Unless you have something else you would like to say, and we would like you to know that we appreciate your commitment and your willingness to come here tonight and to fill out that application and turn it in. We know it's a hard thing to do, and it's a lot of commitment, so we appreciate you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Last one?
Yeah, it's the only one we have left.
Gladine Allred.
Thank you.
Welcome, and please state your name and your address.
I'm Gladine Allred, and I live at 2026 South Iba Drive in Stillwater.
Okay. We have, you have three to five minutes for your statement. The clock will turn yellow at four, and at five, it will beep. If you're in the middle of your sentence, please finish your thoughts.
Thank you.
And you may begin.
Okay. Well, Mayor Noble and members of the council, I'm here to apply for the vacant city council seat. I have been a lifelong resident of Stillwater, and I grew up here, I graduated from OSU, I raised my family here, and I now reside here with my husband, Ed Long. And I believe that my background, experience, and commitment to this community would be of value to the city council, and I can help continue the momentum this city has as we transition to an even more progressive community. With a professional background in counseling, I have developed listening skills to enable me to listen not only to citizens as they address their issues and concerns, but to current businesses and organizations as they discuss their vision for growing the community. And furthermore, I can listen to prospective residents and businesses as they consider relocating to Stillwater and to learn what they may like or may not like. And the council can address these needs to be more proactive in meeting the demands and finding creative solutions to challenges as we continue to evolve and transition. Stillwater is a unique culture. It's a special place in which to live, work, and play. I am passionate and emotionally committed and connected to this town. We need to continue the growth of the vibrant downtown while supporting present businesses, and I am interested in working for the development of Stillwater as a destination point for travel. Recently, many new hotels have been built and consideration has been given to a convention center. So, we're becoming capable of attracting even more state and national conventions, and with our many museums and local attractions, Stillwater is a desirable place to visit. And the city council can help make this a reality with economic benefits for our community. We need to continue to cultivate and develop the partnership with the Stillwater Chamber of Commerce for Economic Development, with OSU and Meridian Technology to train and educate our workforce, and with Stillwater Public Schools as we look to the future. There are other opportunities to be inclusive as we form strategic partnerships to continue to evolve this community to be a diverse and desirable destination to live, work, and play. My previous volunteer experience with city committees such as the Curbside Recycling Task Force, chairing the Stillwater Certified Retirement Community Advisory Committee, the Parks and Recreation Board, and the Charar Museum of Stillwater History, in addition to local civic and service groups, indicate my deep commitment and desire to continue that commitment to grow and develop this community. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of this process.
Thank you. We'll start our questioning now. We're going to start with Vice Mayor Darlington.
Gladine, it's nice to see you here, and you know that we're asking everyone the same question?
Yes.
So, I'm going to ask you this question, and this room will soon be covered with plaques. But if you were to serve on council and at the end of your term, we gave you a plaque, what would you like the plaque to say about you?
Stillwater is a better place because I served.
Thank you, Gladine. And it is.
Thank you for applying. I know you care a lot about Stillwater. My question is, if you're not appointed tonight, or you are appointed, would you plan to seek reelection when the seat becomes available next year? Or would you seek election if you weren't appointed next year?
There are other opportunities to be inclusive as we form strategic partnerships to continue to evolve this community to be a diverse and desirable destination to live, work, and play. My previous volunteer experience with city committees such as the Curbside Recycling Task Force, chairing the Stillwater Certified Retirement Community Advisory Committee, the Parks and Recreation Board, and the Charar Museum of Stillwater History, in addition to local civic and service groups, indicate my deep commitment and desire to continue that commitment to grow and develop this community. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of this process.
Thank you. We'll start our questioning now.
Okay.
Going to start with Vice Mayor Darlington.
Gladine, it's nice to see you here. And you know that we're asking everyone the same question?
Yes.
So I'm going to ask you this question, and this room will soon be covered with plaques. But if you were to serve on council, and at the end of your term, we gave you a plaque, what would you like the plaque to say about you?
Stillwater is a better place because I served.
Thank you, Gladine. And it is.
Thank you for applying. I know you care a lot about Stillwater.
Yes.
My question is, if you're not appointed tonight, or you are appointed, would you plan to seek reelection when the seat becomes available next year? Or would you seek election if you weren't appointed next year?
Well, if I am appointed, I would seek election in February. I've done that, and I'm experienced, and so I would be willing to do that.
Thank you.
What do you consider Stillwater's greatest strength to be?
Well, of course, Stillwater has a university and Meridian Tech, and that is vital. It's the biggest industry in Stillwater. But Stillwater has been called a mini-metropolis. It's small so that it's safe to drive around, and you feel you can go out at night and you don't worry about it. But it has so many cultural opportunities with the university, and they're free, museums and musical shows, and many things, as well as parks and lakes and walking paths and biking trails, which is something that is important to me, that biking paths be even made safer. And I'm so pleased to learn that that is on the agenda for Western between Hall of Fame and Lakeview. But there are many other places in which we could have biking trails that are safer. But I think Stillwater is a wonderful place to live for that reason. It's a mini-metropolis. It's small enough to be safe, but it has cultural and educational opportunities and parks and rivers, lakes, lakes, for everyone.
Okay, so the other side of that is, if there's one issue that would be a weakness of Stillwater, what would you say that would be?
Well, one thing that I know has been of concern, and that is, it involves the area of transportation, and it is the infrastructure, the roads, that we need to have paved and fill in the potholes. And as I said, I have larger biking paths because bikers are not just biking for recreation, they're going to work and to OSU. And I also think that transportation, buses, I'm so glad we have the buses. It's so much better than it was a decade ago. But I would like to see them going to people who are underserved at this time in certain parts of town. And those are some things I would like to address. I think that they are weaknesses to improve the public transportation, all of that.
Thank you. Okay, so do you have anything you would like to say?
I'm just pleased for this opportunity, and thank you so much for being so hospitable.
Thank you, Gladine.
And we would like to thank you for your commitment and for your willingness to fill out the application and then turn it in, and to be able to come here tonight. We know this is a difficult process, and we appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor Noble.
Okay, we're at the end of our applicants. And do any councilors, vice mayor, anybody want to have any discussion?
Well, I might, I don't think I have anything valuable to say. But I will say this is the second time I've been through this sort of a process. And I am really amazed at the quality of the applications that we have this time. And only one person can get picked. And I hope this time we can take advantage of the remaining six, whoever they may be, to get them on the planning commission, to get them on other committees, to encourage them to run when we have a vacancy or two next spring. So I'm just really amazed at the quality of the applications that we have.
Ditto.
I think that's why, you know, I really wanted to ask my question, is, you know, I wasn't trying to make anyone commit to a campaign slogan tonight, but I just wanted to get the idea, and I think you made the point of there's only one spot open, but the magnitude of people, I mean, any of you could have beaten me in an election, so I'm glad none of you ran against me. But I appreciate all of you coming out. And, I mean, as Joe said, we have a lot of places to serve in the city. And I appreciate all of your commitment to Stillwater and wanting to make Stillwater a better place. So thank you so much for coming.
Yes, and I really, I think the common theme here tonight was people. Everybody agreed that people are so important. So... What a talent pool. I mean, I need to reiterate that. We're just so impressed with all of the applications and all of the talent. And we do have ideas. I asked Mr. Galloway today to find out about open boards and different things that we can do to be able to keep your talent here. Obviously, you do want to serve, and we only can pick one. So with that, councilors and Vice Mayor, I'm going to make a nomination. I nominate Elaine Zanotti.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Elaine Zanotti. Please vote. And that passes four to zero. Ms. Zanotti will be the city councilor for seat number two. But I want to say thank you to everybody. We hope that you will serve. We will be in touch. This was such a hard decision. This is so hard to sit up here and have to pick from all of the talent and all of the dedication. I love your passion, every one of you. I love your passion for this city, and we need you. We absolutely need each one of you. And there are two seats open in February, and we hope to see every one of you, every one of you, trying for that position, because we do need you. With that said, we are going to swear in Ms. Zanotti tonight. If you would come to the podium, we are going to have the city clerk.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I stand.
I, Elaine Zanotti.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
And I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
I faithfully.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
My duties.
My duties.
Of the office of City of Stillwater Councilor.
Of the office of City Councilor.
Office number two.
Office number two.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Are we going to take a recess?
Before we continue on, I think we're going to take a five-minute recess. And we will, short recess, I will say. I won't say exactly five minutes, but we'll be right back. Again, thank you to everyone for your applications and for being here.
The Stillwater community gathered on Monday to welcome in a new mayor and to say farewell to an outgoing mayor on the city council. Mayor John Bartley has served on the Stillwater City Council since 2010, first serving in seat number two before being elected to mayor in 2012. Bartley says one of the things he has learned about his community is simply how it works.
I have learned so incredibly much about how our community operates, about how the people in our community think and react, and how there's no such thing as a uniform thought. We are way too complex of a community and way too educated a community to everyone have and think the exact same thing. But that's a good thing.
New Mayor Gina Noble, a professor at Oakland State University, says she would like to continue to push the city council in the direction her predecessors set.
I just want to do the best job I can do and respect the position just like John Bartley did. I'm really excited to represent Stillwater.
Bartley says he is confident that the direction of the city council will continue to move in the right direction with Mayor Noble in his old seat.
I'm proud. I'm proud of what we as a team have accomplished up to now. And I'm very confident that the progress is going to continue going forward. She's going to do a wonderful job. It's going to be completely different than the way I did it. But that's not only okay, that's probably a good thing. And so she's going to have her own style and her own way of doing things. But I have all the confidence in the world that Stillwater's in great hands. We've got a strong council. We've got a strong mayor, and we're going to be doing great things.
For the city of Stillwater, I'm Blake Shy.
Thank you.
For those who recycle, here are some good news to share with you. And if you like curbside recycling, you can add glass to the mix. The city of Stillwater will add curbside glass recycling to its list of services starting Monday, February 16. The system will work like this. Customers will have to place glass separate from their recycled polycart into a 14-gallon tote or other similar-sized container. Collection will be on the third week of the month on everyone's collection day. Waste management will accept multicolored glass. Glass bottles and jars should be emptied and rinsed. Lids should be removed, but labels can stay on. Don't smash the glass. And do not place ceramics in the totes. For more information about the city of Stillwater's residential recycling program, visit our website at stillwater.org.
Hello, ladies.
Hi.
How are y'all?
Good.
How are you? I'm doing well, thank you. And I'm Officer Howard, Stillwater Police Department. The reason why I'm contacting you is your dogs are off limits.
Okay. I didn't realize that was a problem. I'm carrying a leash, and as you can tell, they're pretty gentle dogs.
Yeah, I understand that. Basically, at the city of Stillwater, we have an ordinance that requires all dogs to be on a leash. Anytime they're not confined to your residence, anytime you're out in a public place, especially in a park, we require that they be on leash that's under your control and not just in your hand.
Even in the open grass areas that are out here?
Yeah, that's correct. You know, anytime you're in a park or open spaces where there's other animals where your dogs make you become distracted, we don't want them to run out in front of a vehicle and be hit. So we require that all dogs are on a leash.
Okay, we'll make sure we get them on the leash. I appreciate the information. Thank you.
No problem at all. Y'all have a good day.
You, too. Thanks. Was that recess?
That's my favorite class.
Is it nap time now?
Here, I have an extra gen-
We are... This takes us to the next item under general orders, which is Item B 2015-16 Fiscal Operating Budget Update from City Manager Dan- Budget Update from City Manager Dan Galloway.
Yeah, this is just going to be a brief update. We had our, last week, our budget fair. We had a lot of great public input, and we had discussion. And I think councils, I think everything seemed to be pretty wild to everybody's comments. We didn't hear a lot of public comment about changes. I think we recognize it's going into next year, we don't see a huge increase in revenues. It's going to be pretty flat. The last two years, we've experienced some really significant growth, but there's some signs out there. Sales tax has been a little flat, and so we're projecting pretty much straightforward. The effect of that, we're a little bit limited. We don't ever have enough money to afford all the capital items that we would like. The main, the main subject of discussion was our amount that we put into capital expenditures for maintenance of streets. And we've heard a lot about streets tonight and the interview process. Everybody's absolutely correct. Streets are important. We don't have enough money to fix them all. But the council, several years ago, three or four years ago, when the budget, we had the ability, kind of established a policy, and that policy was be to try, if at all possible, every year to identify four million in capital money to place into streets. We were able to do that for two years. Again, with the revenues flat this year, we've got some other capital needs. Our first proposed draft that you saw and was published in this booklet showed 2.33 million this year in our first draft because we had so many other items. And that was a concern. And so the staff made a commitment, we'd go back and take a look and see how close we could get to that goal of four million. So the update that I'm going to, just in a nutshell, as you recall, we have a lot of, we have 46 authorized positions that are normally full, but we're in a, with normal turnover, those are vacant right now. So we've looked at how we can stagger the filling of those positions to save some money. We'll be vacant for a while, and we'll be budgeted in the budget the full year, but they won't all be filled. We've also looked very, very critically at what we've had in the budget for allowing for adjustments for performance evaluations. That's a limited amount. We've also looked at our materials and supplies. And a net result of all that, cutting in a nutshell, at this point, I am certain we're going to go from that three-point, or 2.33 that we had. I'm confident at this point, we're up a million. We're up at 3.33. Now, we are scheduled to come back on the May 18th with the next revised budget draft for you to see as a proposed draft to put on the June 1 agenda for consideration and approval. As I say, right now, I'm confident we're going to get very, very close to 3.5 million for streets and not greatly impact the management of our other options and to retain those other critical items. Again, it's not four, but here's what I would offer along with that. We're always cautious, very cautious, and I believe rightfully so, Mrs. Lamb and myself particularly, we look, and the whole admin team. We estimate what's going to be our ending balance at the end of the year. And we, very cautiously, we estimate that. And normally, we continue to control expenditures, and normally, we will close the books and find out our ending balance is a little greater than what we've projected. Don't know what that's going to be. It could be 300,000, it could be 600,000. That number becomes available about October 1st because we're allowed, 90 days after the year ends. We have 90 days to pay outstanding claims, to process everything, and so for audit purposes, on October 1, we will have an accurate accounting of how much the ending balance was. And if that exceeds our projections, then I could come back to council and say, would you, here's $287,000, would you like to amend the budget and get us that much closer to the four? But again, it would be an option. Or that money is not going to be appropriated. We can go through the year and see what progress we're making with the 3.5, and you would have that option to come back to that. So even though at this point, I'm, I think it would be, could start being damaging to go all the way to four, I think if we can get to 3.5 by the 18th. And with that assurance that we're going to monitor that, and as the year goes, we can see if you could come back and amend to that. So that's the current status. We've come up with about a million by very carefully manipulating a few things in time-wise, and hopefully, that's on the right track. Questions?
Yes.
I appreciate, I appreciate you changing, at least considering the number. I think we all were a little concerned about that, but as I said last time, I've, I remember when we didn't budget four, we didn't budget three, we didn't budget two. And we have to recognize current conditions, and it does look like next year could have a few bumps in the road. So, you know, I like your cautious approach. We don't know exactly where we'll be in six months. And the other capital priorities were important, too. I mean, I know roads are important. Nobody's going to talk about roofs at other, at other locations being important because they see the roads and they feel the roads. But as I said before, again, I guess I'm repeating myself again, but the solution for the roads is a long-term plan, and it's getting that half-cent sales tax reinstituted, you know? And that's, those kind of actions are how we will advance our roads, not by our operating budget. At least, that's my view. I don't think you can get there from here, trying to do it on your operating budget.
I think we're going to need some additional, additional funding eventually, but, and that's the other thing we tried to do in this, this effort since last week, is the list of proposed capital items. We've tried to retain those because, again, that's not nearly all of our capital needs. Those were determined to be high priority, and they relate to public safety, they relate to the other infrastructure needs, and I think there's no frill in there. It's just basically, let's fix our infrastructure and keep things safe, keep our police safe, fire safe, get you water and sewer and all those other things. So we've talked about that, but I, I think that's a good step, and hopefully, everybody's on board, and we'll keep working in that direction.
I appreciate that also, Mr. Galloway, and I also appreciate Counselor Weaver's comment. Trying to think of a long-view plan is really a top priority.
Thank you.
I agree with everything that was said here tonight, and I appreciate that that number did rise, and I hope that we can find a little bit more money to put in there. But I just agree, we have to, that half-cent sales tax is going to have to be renewed, and I think people understand that it's ultimately very important to our roads. And this budget process, I appreciate that we've had input from citizens, and it's a work in progress, and I appreciate administration and staff for being that progress. Thank you.
You will stay after it.
There's no, no-
No action taken, no. That's just an update.
All right. So the next item under general order is Item C, Complete Streets Policy to Guide Transportation Project Development CC-14-45.
I'd like to ask Mr. McLennie, our Services Director, who's been working with transportation, make a report.
Yes, John McLennie, Services Director. We would actually like to ask the council to consider tabling this item to a study session so that we can discuss it in more detail. Several reasons. I know it's on tonight for a resolution, but the staff has had some internal discussions about whether this should be an ordinance, what type of ordinance, whether or not it should be a resolution, whether it should be citywide or targeted to certain projects or certain areas of town. We also heard tonight the Form-based codes. A lot of the text of the Form-based code has elements of complete streets in it, so there's some synergies there that probably need further discussion also in more detail. And then we also have a new council member, so we want to be able to make sure that all the council is up to speed on complete streets and have a more detailed discussion.
Mayor, I'm glad to see you up here, asking us to table. I have to be honest with you, I read the policy, and I had some issues with it. Don't get me wrong, I'm on board with complete streets. I thought the policy was, could be tightened up a little bit in the way it was written. I want to make sure we're careful and deliberate and strategic in how we roll this out because I want it to be successful. And I'm not sure we're quite there yet, and I would really like to have some discussion time in a, in a study session to go over it. So.
I love study sessions.
Okay. If that's good with everyone, that's the way we'll go for the next study session.
I, Counselor Weaver, I thought the same thing, and we are so close. I think a little bit more discussion, so I appreciate that you want us to table this as well. So what do we need to do? Make a motion to table?
You could table, and if you want to set a specific date, that's fine, or if you just want to table it subject to call, you could do that.
I would recommend tabling it subject to call with the understanding that we'll try to find a study session date in the very near future as soon as we can. I don't want to delay this. I think it's something we need to talk about very quickly. But I, too, in reading it, I think there was some statements in the policy that were kind of inadvertently worded backwards, and we need some time to tweak those a little stop the poly itself, it's just the way it's styled.
It's a great policy, and looking forward to it.
So I would recommend a motion to table subject to call, and with the understanding we would have this in the next few weeks, not a few months.
And I would so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table subject to call on the complete streets. Let's vote. And the vote was five to zero. We will table this subject to call. Thank you.
What did Elaine do on that one? Did she vote?
I appreciate it. This is my first vote, yes.
She found the book.
Her name's already up there.
We got five votes.
Five oh.
And the last item, oh, nope, we are done with general orders. We removed that. So we are going to, this takes us to resolutions. Item A, Resolution Number 2015.
Is tabled.
Ah, that's right, that's right. Okay, so the next is Item B, Resolution Number 2015-9, A Resolution Regarding Commitment of Leverage for the Oklahoma Department of Commerce Community Development Block Grant, CDBG 15, 2015 State Small Cities Program.
Mr. Shiprue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 2015-9. And it is approved for, with Ms. Zanotti abstaining on this one. And this takes us to ordinances, correct? On first reading, in ordinances on first reading, we have Item A, Ordinance Number 3301, Mr. Dorman.
An ordnancy zoning attractive land located at 702 East 14th Street from RSS, small lot, single-family residential district to IL light industrial district.
Discussion.
Mr. Shiprue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance Ordinance 3301 to second reading. Please vote. And Ordinance Number 3301 advances to second reading with a vote of four to zero, five to zero.
Apparently, I hit yes, but maybe I messed something up.
It's okay. It's, it, okay.
Oh.
No choice.
No choice, okay. Okay, Item Number B, Ordinance Number 3302, Mr. Dorman.
An ordnancy zoning attractive land located at 1299 North Giardo Road from RSL, large lot, single-family residential district to RSS, small lot, single-family residential district.
Discussion.
Motion to approve, move to second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance Ordinance 3302 to second reading. Please vote. Ordinance Number 3302 advances to second reading with a vote of five to zero. Our next item is Item C, First Reading for Ordinance Number 3303, Mr. Dorman.
An ordnancy zoning attractive land located at 1411 North Hightower Street, 1324 North Henderson Street, and 1312 North Henderson Street from A, Agriculture District and RSL Large Lot Single Family Residential District to RSS, Small Lot Single Family Residential District.
Discussion.
Motion to advance, second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance Ordinance 3303 to second reading. Please vote. Ordinance Number 3303 advances to second reading with a vote of five to zero. And we are on to Item D. We have an ordinance, we have Ordinance Number 3304 on first reading, Mr. Dorman.
An ordnancy zoning attractive land located at 416, 418, 421, 422, 424, 501, 502, 503, 504, 505, 508, 511, and 515 South Ramsey Street, and 502 and 506 South Hester Street, and 807 and 809 West Fourth Avenue from RMI, multi-family residential intermediate district, and CG, commercial general district, to HR, high-rise district.
Discussion.
I would also move that we advance 3304 to second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance Ordinance 3304 to second reading. Please vote. Ordinance Number 3304 advances to second reading with a vote of five to zero. Takes us to ordinances under second reading, Number 3299, Mr. Dorman.
An ordnancy zoning attractive land located at 700 and 800 East North Gate Drive from CS, commercial shopping district, to RSS, small lot, single-family residential district.
Okay, discussion, or do we have a motion to adopt Ordinance 3299 on second reading?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance 3299 on second reading. Please vote. Ordinance Number 3299 adopted with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman.
Just very quickly, we do have a draft of the proposed oil and gas ordinance online. It went up on Friday afternoon about mid-afternoon. It is the post-Senate Bill 809 version, so it contains changes that we're recommending based upon the passage of that new legislation. There is also a form for citizens to make written comments about the draft on that website, so we would be very interested in any input that we might get on that. The item will be ready for you to review on the May 18th agenda.
Where can we-
You sent that to us directly?
Yes.
Okay. And where would citizens find that online? Stillwater.org, and then where do they go?
There's actually a link on the front, on the front page that says, "Oil and Gas Regulations." Isn't that how we have it?
Would you pull it up, please? Yes, thank you, Ms. Dennis.
I had it ready, hoping that someone would ask the question. Here on the front page, stillwater.org, oil and gas activities. If someone just clicks on that, it will take you directly to the proposed ordinance draft that is available for download. I'll do that right quickly. And it's about six, seven pages, if I recall correctly. And then the other is the comment form that is available. And this is a fill-in form, but it needs to be saved to your personal computer, filled in, and then emailed. And it can be, you just click the email button, and it comes to Mr. Dorman and myself, the comment form does.
Does it say that on the form to save it to your computer desktop, or could we make that?
It said it on the instructions.
Perfect. Perfect. Great idea. Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else, Mr. Dorman?
That's all I have tonight, ma'am.
Thanks, Ms. Dennis.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Galloway.
Yeah, speaking of public info, I want to remind everybody, tomorrow evening at 6:00 to 7:00 at the Public Library, Transportation will be there to discuss- 6:00 to 7:00 at the Public Library, Transportation will be there to discuss the Western and Hall of Fame intersection and street project, and staff will explain the project, what it involves, and will listen to the public at that one. And then on May the 14th, also at the Public Library from 67th to 7, Transportation Department will be explaining the Perkins Road project, the much anticipated widening north of McIlroy where it's so congested. So two very important road projects. We want to make sure the public has an opportunity to understand those and voice their comments as well. So make sure you mark your calendar. Love to have you there.
Widening on Perkins north of?
McIlroy to Lakeview.
To Lakeview. Very popular request.
In the planning stages, he'll explain that. We have some preliminary design concepts. We're having meetings with stakeholders in that area, and also with the Department of Transportation will have to approve both of these projects because the state, the one on Perkins, it is a state highway. And the Western Road project, you recall, we worked with ODOT, they've made a $3 million commitment to the project. OSU is a partner in the project, and the city is a partner in the project, so we have three public entities jointly working on that project. And so it's a good project, and we'll bring everybody up to date on that as well.
Okay, thank you. So that moves us to miscellaneous items from the City Council. Councilors, anything for upcoming meetings or any announcements?
I have several announcements.
Okay, please start.
One is that office hours are starting. Counselor Nahara and I, coming out of the Quality of Life Committee, will actually have a community reach-out or office hours. I kind of like office hours. We might change it to that name. Counselor Nahara will be at Brahms on Friday, May 22nd, from 7:30 to 8:30 AM. Brahms on Sixth Street. I'll be at The Bagel Shop on Friday, May 15th, from 10:00 to 11:00 AM also. And these times and locations will be on the website, and Sherry is going to work on getting the word out. We hope to be just overwhelmed. Otherwise, Counselor Nahara will have to eat ice cream the whole time, and I'll have to eat bagels. And we don't need that. Also, I had the great opportunity to go to the MISO Conference last week. It was very, very exciting. MISO is an acronym for Municipal Electric Services of Oklahoma, of which we are a member. There are 400,000 residents in Oklahoma in 63 different communities that are served by public electric services. And it was just really eye-opening for me, and it made me very proud of the people that we have working for us, proud that we are a city that had the foresight in 1901 to form a public utility service. And I learned a lot. Tagging on to that, our very own Mr. Blankenship was awarded the Marvin Hicks Al Middleton Meritorious Service Award at that convention. That was a surprise to him. He was actually not even there. I mean, he was at the meeting because, yeah, he had to leave early and work, and so we're very proud of him, very proud of the work. I think there were 13 Stillwater people there, and it was very interesting. Also, we'd like to congratulate Waste Management's Chris Beaver, who won the National Waste and Recycling Association Driver of the Year Award for the small municipality category. Chris will be recognized at the Waste Expo Awards Ceremony in Las Vegas. This is the second time the city has won first place in this competition. Congratulations to Chris. Thank you very much.
I have two announcements. My first one is to remind the OSU students that we, the City of Stillwater, is offering free drop-off of furniture, appliances, computers, electronics at our Convenience Collection Center at Eighth and Perkins. All you need to do is bring your OSU ID, and it is completely free, so that will help clean up our streets. And then I'd also like to say thank you to Jim Scott, our Parks and Rec Manager. I guess this is not, okay. He started to install our tobacco-free signs, the resolution we passed last year, and we talked about doing the signs, and so we've started that, and it's been rolled out in the ballparks, and we're going to do a lot of the playgrounds and disc golf and all the other parks coming up in the next couple of weeks, and we'll hopefully do a big promotion for that. So just want to remind people, if you're at the parks, please be respectful of those around you, and it's for the kids to enjoy and for people to enjoy the clean air of Stillwater, and so please be respectful and honor our resolution.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver?
Well, and we'd also like to congratulate Megan Kozak, who was named the 2015 OSU Student Employee of the Year, but she works for the Stillwater Department of Marketing and Public Relations for the past three years. And she's the second person from that office who has won that award, so we might want to look into that, see what they've got going on. But now, something else that I would like, I mean, seriously, I was very impressed that a young lady came up here to bring a concern about a sidewalk, and I was also impressed to learn that she went to our Budget Fair, asked questions, and got informed. I think we should address her concern, if at all possible, so that we say we want input and we want to take action based on what our community wants. I'd like to give that some serious concern.
You will.
And the fact that she came up here tonight's a big deal, at least to me. So I'd at least like to know how much it would cost to meet her request. And that's all.
Okay, and I had the same thing on my list as well. I would like to find some type of budget to help. I was so impressed that she came. I do remember her at the Budget Fair, and I would like to see us address that as well.
We'll report back to you on that.
Wouldn't it be awful if the word got out that if you come to Budget Fair, they listen to you?
I was just going to say, my gosh.
Wow, what a concept.
What a concept.
Also, Elaine, welcome.
Thank you.
And we all look forward to working with you. I'm certain that you're a little bit overwhelmed right now.
Well, I figured out the button, so I figure that's step one.
That's good.
Exactly.
So you will, city manager, and he will contact you for?
Right.
Spend some time, play a little catch-up.
Perfect, perfect.
They'll get your email, they'll explain everything, so we're just happy to have you on the team, and that we have five votes. And I just want to thank everybody that was here tonight one more time. Overwhelmingly impressive candidates. And we do have plans for you. And we don't want to lose this momentum. We have people who are willing to step up and do what needs to be done, and we just absolutely want to get you involved. And so thank you, and thank you for being here tonight. Good job, Mr. Blankenship. OSU graduation is this weekend, so.
Be patient.
Be patient, but absolutely. Congratulations to all the students and to the faculty who made it through this semester. And everybody be careful and safe, and drive with caution. And we welcome all of the parents into the City of Stillwater.
You reminded me of something.
Okay.
Yeah, I forgot to add, I'll go to the council, though, I, the admin team and Ms. Lamb will handle the budget update on the 18th. I have to miss that meeting. My granddaughter graduates from high school in Tulsa, and they're moving to Seattle right after graduation, and it's kind of a one-time thing. I need to go to her graduation.
You are excused, and congratulations to you.
We'll fix the budget while you're gone.
I know. I threatened a few people.
One more announcement to help clean up Stillwater when the OSU students move out for the summer. Oh, that's the same one that you have.
You can announce it, too.
What am I missing? I'll read it next time. We have a, no? Oh, wait, 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 wait. That's not it. I can be as organized. That's not it, that's not it. Here we go. In case you missed one of the public information sessions, we'd like to announce that the city will begin the Main Street Water Line Project May 11th. Crews will be moving the water line from the middle of the street to the right of way. Construction will close side streets and parts of Main, but we hope to keep Main Street open to through traffic. The target completion date will be in November. Everybody needs to have patience and know that we are making progress. And when you see a street closed, instead of thinking, what an inconvenience, please think of it as progress, and we are moving the city forward. So anything else? If nothing else, I.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. And a second to adjourn. Let's please vote. Couldn't even get that one out. And I call this meeting closed. Sorry about that. And I'm going to open our next meeting, which is the SUA. Is that correct, Mr. Dorman?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Stillwater Utilities Authority. I called to order the May 4th, 2015 Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting. It is, what time?
7:52.
You notice that I look at you because I need to learn how to tell military time. I'm really sorry about that. And my phone's put away. The meeting, I'm calling the meeting to order. Takes us to Item Two, Consent Docket. Would any counselor like to remove anything from the consent docket, or is there a motion to approve the consent docket?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. And the consent docket is approved with a vote of five to zero. Next, we have a public comment on agenda items not scheduled for public hearing. We do not have any requests to speak. The next item is General Orders. Correct? And we have one item. It's the Professional Services Agreement for the East Basin Interceptor Replacement, SUA-15-31. Mr. Galloway, does this require action?
Yes, it does. It's fairly straightforward. Our Capitol Program Manager, Candy Stirring, I'd like to have her give a brief report on this, if we could. Ms. Stirring?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Let me find my file real quickly. I'm very pleased to be presenting to you all for the first time. Congratulations, Counselor Zanotti. This project is the East Basin Project. There is an area, if you'll look in the oval, area where there's historically been some sewer overflows, and with the development of Aspen Heights, it's going to contribute more flow to that area. So a little over a year ago, we started a study that looked at different options for the solution to these overflows. Excuse me. And there was multiple options, and the city staff selected, after evaluating them all, the one, the red line option, which is expansion of the interceptor that is in that location. It's now 18 inches, and we want to take it to 24 inches. So that looks like this approximately, and these are the street names in the area that is closest aligned with. So this includes 2,600 linear feet of new 24-inch sewer line, 11 new manholes, a stream crossing, a railroad crossing, and six driveways that we'll cross. This project also aligns with a master plan recommended project, so it's not doing anything additional that wouldn't be needed anyways. This would eventually be needed. We're just doing it on an accelerated schedule. And we've already got a, we went out for a selection of engineering firms. We chose HDR, which was the firm that helped us with the study, and helped us with some fine-tuning of our models, so they're familiar with everything. And we've already got the contract in place, and so we're bringing this to you all. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Counselors, questions?
We'd recommend the trustees authorize expenditures up to $266,700 for this project.
I wouldn't have approved it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Professional Services Agreement for the East Basin Interceptor Replacement, SUA-15-31. Please vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stirring.
And that is approved, five to zero. Reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Galloway?
Nothing further to report.
Counselors?
No, thank you.
With no other business, is there a motion to adjourn the May 4th, 2015 Stillwater Utilities Authority Meeting?
So moved.
Second.
We'll let her have it.
And that motion overwhelmingly passed with five to zero. The Stillwater Utility Authority is adjourned at?
7:57.
7:57 PM. And that concludes our meeting tonight. Thank you.